I would like to call the March 2, 2016, City Council Meeting to Order. Let the record reflect that all City Council members are present. Please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious and loving Heavenly Father, first we thank you for the privilege of living in a country where we enjoy the many freedoms provided by our founding fathers in their wisdom. The freedom to assemble and to speak our minds without fear of retribution. We also wish to invoke your blessings on the results of our work in this council. The successes we have made are all with your help and guidance. And we should not forget to ask your continued blessings and guidance for those city employees who have contributed so much of their talents and personal commitments to the improvements of our city. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
First, order of business, we have Proclamations. And the first one is American Red Cross Month, which I will read and present, which is, in the light of the weather that we've had recently, very important. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas, March is a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need. And whereas, American Red Cross heroes are on the front lines every day volunteering their time, taking life-saving courses, and providing financial donations. And whereas, we honor and remember our heroes here in Punta Gorda, who worked tirelessly and helped to help in time of disaster, or when someone needs the comfort of a helping hand. And whereas, across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, wildfires, and many other natural and man-made disasters, collects forty percent of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions life-saving skills such as CPR, and connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. And whereas, we dedicate the month of March to all of those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 as American Red Cross Month, and encourages all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. Passed and duly adopted, this regular session, second day of March 2016, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And to accept is Bridget Montalvo? Bridget? Volunteer Bridget? I don't see Bridget here this morning, but we will definitely get this to the Red Cross. Thank you. And next, we have another proclamation. Councilmember Wine will present for Surveyors and Mappers Week.
Proclamation of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas, surveying has been an essential element in development of the human environment since the dawn of recorded history, and is instrumental in the definition of legal boundaries for land ownership, as well as the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction, with its most familiar uses in the field of transportation, land development, communications, energy delivery, and mapping. And whereas, surveyors and mappers are counted among the founding leaders of our country, including George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, among many others, were instrumental in the formation of the layout of property boundaries in the United States, which have provided our citizens the enjoyment of property ownership. And whereas, the surveying and mapping profession requires special education and training, including the knowledge of mathematics, trigonometry, and geometry, as well as the related physical and applied sciences tempered by the requirements of law for evidence and possession. And whereas, surveyors and mappers are uniquely qualified and licensed to determine and describe land and water boundaries for the management of natural resources and protection of private and public property rights. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of March 20th to 26th, 2016, as Surveyors and Mappers Week, and invites all citizens to join surveyors and mappers in using their own talents for the good of the community, as well as recognizing and appreciating the talents of others. Passed and duly adopted and regular session the second day of March 2016, signed Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting is Derek Miller. Come on, Steve.
Would you like to say a few words?
Go ahead. Out on behalf of all land surveyors and mappers in the state of Florida, we thank you, we thank the City Council of Punta Gorda. And if you see a surveyor out in the field, go out and talk to him, see what he's doing, ask him questions, give him a big hug.
Okay, at this time, we will take anybody whose name has been submitted for a board or committee. If you have submitted your name as a nomination for a board or committee, and you would like to come and introduce yourself, now would be the time. Any board or committee member, okay, come on up. Please state your name first, and then...
Good morning. I'm Julie McGilvery, 2220 Gulfview. I've submitted my name to be, to represent the board, in terms of the general employees' pension board. I've got over twenty years of life insurance, as well as financial history. I've been a consultant to the insurance industry as well. So I feel that I'm pretty good at looking at numbers, all the boring stuff that everybody probably doesn't want to stare at all day long. So just wanted to introduce myself and see if I could give some help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will recess the City Council, and shortly, we will reconvene as the CRA. Sit up tall. Got your red on today. Good morning.
Good morning.
Taking a photo with Alicia here quickly.
Pardon me?
They want a new photo of us, so...
Oh, okay.
We need Nancy. Okay, everybody sit up tall.
Ready.
Okay, I would like to call the March 2, 2016, Community Development Agency Meeting to Order. And the first item of business would be citizens' comments on CRA agenda items only, which is the project status report, the minutes, and the legal invoice. So citizens' comments, and I'm going to be reading this several times, so I'll start now. Procedures for public comments. If you wish to speak, you must approach the microphone and state your name and address. Form an orderly line along the wall and be ready to approach the podium. The mayor will signal to you when to begin. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Sharing the minutes is not allowed. Speakers will address all comments to the council as a whole, and not to any one individual. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience is not allowed. For an effective and efficient meeting, we would ask that if you are reiterating another speaker's comments, please acknowledge that and add only additional content. Audience and speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. No applause before, during, or after each speaker. If you have supporting documents to display during the meeting, you must provide a copy to the city clerk. Council members will not be answering impromptu questions during the public comment period, and once our presentations begin, the public comment period for that agenda item has ended. Additional time for public comment is provided at the end of the meeting, and you're all welcome to stay. Thank you for your participation and cooperation. So right now, we're taking public comments on CRA agenda items, those three things. The project status report, the approval of the minutes, and the invoice. Do I see any comments on those items? Okay, so now we will move into the CRA project status report.
Howard Cunick, CRA Director. Marina is, again, pretty well full. We are up to sixteen live aboard, and you see the community room bookings, and the pump-out vessel. You see the activity for February, as of February 22nd, so it's more than that by the end of February. But, and you compare it to last February, you see that everything is up, activity is up. Marina building improvements, we did receive a bid for the window issue. The contractor is requesting too many dollars. So we're going to discontinue negotiations, and we are going to revise our specs again, and go out there and try and find somebody who's a little more reasonable to get to the root of it. These are the Harbor Walk projects going on. The playground is on today's agenda. The South Bridge Underpass likely to be bid in July, and construction to start in September. That's the one that has the bat issue, so we can only construct at a certain time of the year. And for those of you who weren't here last month, there are bats underneath the US 41 South Bridge, and you're only allowed to construct when the bats aren't in their mating season. You never know what you learn when you get into some of these projects. Harbor Walk West Area 1, again, we hope to be able to bid that in July of this year. That's the area from the hotel to the gazebo. And the Harbor Walks West Seawall is done, we're just, again, sod replacement with all the storm damage going on, or with all the rains, we've had to push that out a little for final completion. But this is the Harbor Walk behind the Marina Building and the Crab House, it's well underway. Electrical conduit has been placed, bases for lighter bollards have been poured, so that's well on its way. We still don't have the permit yet for the bridge over the, you know, the harbor area there, connecting to the walkway on the other side of the boat ramp. But it's coming.
Howard.
Howard, I've gotten some questions with regards to the crosswalk that's going to go over the ramp to the boat and continue one over the bridge, in terms of safety between the pedestrians and the boat traffic that's going to be going up and down the ramp. Now typically, in a pedestrian crosswalk, the pedestrian or the bicyclists, when they step out into the roadway, would be required, the vehicle would be required to stop. In this case, you have boats going up and down a ramp. We may want to take a second look at that and see what we can do to not interfere.
Well, we can put up a stop sign for the Harbor Walk, just like we've done in other areas.
Okay.
I mean, there's only so many boats that are going to go up and down.
Even now, you still have to cross that if you're headed on the path. You're still crossing the, it's a little bit farther, closer to the ramp now.
Yeah, I mean, you've got to be careful.
Just a safety concern, that's all.
So is the footbridge, are we still deciding on that? Because we put it as like an ad alternate, right? On the...
Oh, no, we plan to do it once we get a permit.
We're planning to do it now, okay.
Once we get a permit, haven't got the permit yet. We hope that's coming soon, because they're full speed ahead on that Harbor Walk.
That's the only part we're waiting for, the footbridge?
Somebody from Public Works will correct me if I'm wrong.
Good morning, Mark Gering. I was getting up from the chair, I didn't hear the last question, I'm sorry.
The only thing we're waiting on is the, that little footbridge permit.
Yes, from DOT.
Yes.
Correct. We have our consultant working on that.
Would it be helpful if it was brought up at the next NPO meeting as a follow-up, or do you feel you have it under control?
I think we have it under control at this point. We had some structural deficiencies that we hired a consultant to address. He made the application about two weeks ago, so we're expecting the next week or so that DOT will reply back that we've met those requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do continue to work at the Vietnam Wall. We're trying to do as much as we can to expend the state funds until the granite can come in. You know, granite's not going to come in until June, who knows? A month or two, we don't know, but at least not until June. And the Punta Gorda Library, another public meeting is scheduled for March 17th. Oh, it's four to seven, not one to seven. Four to seven PM on March 17th.
What is the structure of that meeting going to be? Do we know?
David Hilson, Urban Design. There's going to be a presentation of the schematic designs, then public input for how this is what we've heard, this is how we're going to achieve that, is this what we're achieving? So it'll be a full three-hour meeting.
So they've taken the input that they, because before, they just had these little boxes, now they're actually going to have layouts of the floor?
Correct.
Of the library? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is this something where we would like to reschedule the mural dedication because of this meeting? I know it's not part of Howard's presentation, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
We, I don't...
What do we have?
We have a mural, the mural dedication at five o'clock on that same day. We can let her know.
That's the picture of the chocolate and wine work that's going on next door to the pedelec, so they're moving along. And we're still working on the lease with Coldwell Banker, putting the finishing touches on whether or not we're going to have a lease.
Frank?
It's rather disgusting, the way that Coldwell Bankers is handling this. I noticed that our lawyer has billed us for fifteen hours, and eleven of those hours have been for Coldwell Bankers. I think we ought to give the word to them as either come up with something reasonable, or let's find somebody else. Thank you.
Well, that's what we're getting down to.
Good.
We told them to take the Morgan Stanley lease, because Morgan Stanley is a national company, just like Coldwell Banker, and use it. Oh, we've agreed on all the financial terms, just use it. Well, they didn't do that. Now, we can accept some of their changes. You know how far along we are, roughly?
Well, first of all, for the record, this time around, it's the real estate agents, not the attorneys that are mucking things up.
And I realize that.
And, yeah, we had a meeting, I guess it was a week or so ago, with the local real estate agent for this project. And he gave us a draft that was intended to achieve the direction of provide the unique facets of your business that require us to deviate from the standard lease, just like what we did with Morgan Stanley. They didn't quite follow those directions, and then when we gave them the Morgan Stanley lease and said, "Look, if you follow this, fine, if there's some change," you know, like with respect to timeframes, you know, "we can maybe have some flexibility there." But what we got back was like eighty percent of the provision in the Morgan Stanley lease, and then a change that was substantive in nature. So Mikhail has, she's taken, it's a very tedious task of being able to compare the language, and I just received that a day or so ago, to see what of those changes are substantive that we don't want to accept without bringing it back to you for final determination. But our direction is, you know, from you, is to keep it as a standard form lease. And hopefully, that task will be resolved by beginning of next week. And if they don't accept that language, you know, we'll just have to decide what to do at that point.
Go ahead.
Are you saying it's our own, local, real estate people?
No, I think the one that we're dealing with is more regional.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to suggest that it was the attorney.
I've got broad shoulders, it's all right.
When you only billed us for fifteen hours in a month, and fourteen of it is for them, congratulations.
I will tell you, it's not the most interesting task that I do for the city, so...
Well, do we want to agree on some limit here? I mean...
Didn't we leave it up to Howard and...
Yeah, but if we're going to continue down this path...
I think we're at the point where when we see what they've given after last meeting, I'll either accept or say, no, this is what we have to live with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good point, Frank, thank you. That's it? Any other questions for Howard? Okay, now, approval of the minutes?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Carried unanimously. And we have the invoice. Any other questions?
I move approval of the lawyer's invoice.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the invoice, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Carried unanimously. Okay, now we will take Commissioner's comments. Nancy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Gary?
I showed mine.
Nothing.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and now citizens' comments on CRA agenda, CRA items. This would be your time to speak on CRA items. Okay, we will now recess the CRA, and shortly, we will reconvene as the City Council. See you later. Bye. The resolution, you can give him that. Okay, we are now moving into the public hearing agenda, and we have three public hearings. And the first is the resolution.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, approving a substantial amendment to the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan for the City of Punta Gorda, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning, David Hilson, Urban Design Manager. What we're asking for is a substantial deviation to our 2015 action plan for CDBG. I was unable to, in a timely fashion, get in and enter local agreement with the county for the use of the Gray Street property. Because of timeliness issues with expending our funds based on federal guidelines, we are requesting that we move the funds into an infrastructure project for sidewalks in the Tribune Woods neighborhood.
How, you know, there's another project that's been on the table that we've been approached about with the Bernice Russell Development Corporation. So how is the public support for these sidewalks? You know, has that been a high priority? Because this other project, you know, is already on the list for next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, it was definitely a higher priority. Again, it came down to timeliness at the time. If we were to go that direction for those housing units, we would need to guarantee the construction funds as well. So there will have to be a guarantee outside of, outside of just the approval of the architectural surfaces.
Well, that's what I wanted to say. I mean, it's if we could go ahead with the architecture, if, I mean, I know we haven't had the meeting to decide whether we were all okay with it, I don't know how everyone's feeling, but housing is definitely at the top of the list of community needs, both in the PACE assessment and the United Way. So I hate to just do sidewalks because they're the quickest thing to do when we really have a serious need in the community.
This is going to be a public hearing, so do we want to open that? Or does anybody want to ask more questions or make comments now before we open the public hearing? Gary?
I'd like to make a comment that I've spent a little time touring that particular neighborhood, and realizing that this is, by Punta Gorda standards, one of the more difficult neighborhoods, but from national standards, it's a wonderful potential neighborhood. And I think that the idea of expending efforts to improve affordable housing in that particular area that's not a project is a very commendable thing to do, and I think it's something that we should give very serious consideration to.
I'd like to hear the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing? Public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing, so if you would like to speak on this resolution, please come to this podium, state your name and address, and I will signal you, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Merrick Brown, and I represent the Bernice Russell Community Development Corporation. We're located at 329 East Virginia Avenue. We are opposed to using the CDBG funds for sidewalks, at least all of it. Sidewalks, of course, are important, but if you, as already been mentioned, if you look at the various needs assessments, and particularly the one that was done by the Florida Department of Health last year, sidewalks were number nine. Affordable housing is number two. And so there's a far greater need for affordable housing at this point than sidewalks. We believe that there is a, using this money for, to pay for the architectural drawings for the project to rehabilitate the Andrews Building, is a higher use of these funds, and frankly, we believe that it meets, or better meets, the HUD intention for the CDBG funds. CDBG funds are not meant to be in perpetuity, they are meant to be a catalyst. I think that HUD would be overjoyed if, when they learned that we would be using about 25,000 of these funds for drawings, and then to have the city then partner to complete the project. I think that's a, that way you leverage the CDBG funds for a larger purpose. It would be, it would not be easy. It's frankly, it's not rocket science. It would mean coordinating the use of the CDB funds, based on their timeline, and the city being willing to fund the larger project. I think that coordination is relatively simple, and it could be done. I think it's important to be done now, because it's, we need these, this housing. We literally have people living in the woods in tents. And yes, if the project is done later, that's great, but we have people who have outstanding needs right now. And so my suggestion is that, is that we begin right away. I think you'll find in a few minutes that there is broad-based community support for this project. I would urge the council to consider doing this in an expeditious manner, and let's get on with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Ted Zawistowski. I'm a member of the Board of the NAACP Branch 5093 in Punta Gorda and that area. I'm also Chair of the Social Justice Committee of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. I live at 23431 Freeport Avenue in Port Charlotte. We feel that the proposal for more housing is very important. It's a positive use of an existing building, enhancing that use, and also addressing the real need of the community for affordable housing. So therefore, we encourage support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Anna Callwood, President of the Tribune Woods United Association, Inc. As the quarterback for the neighborhood, we have been charged with making sure that the priorities be addressed, preferably in the order in which the priorities... the priorities be addressed before, in the order in which the priority order, in which they are, were voted on by the community. This initiative, the Charlotte County Health Department, Ms. Amber Jola, who was the Dan Pace Environment Health Specialist, conveyed or did the survey for us. As Mr. Brown had stated, we do have a major need for housing, which is number two on our list. We have addressed priority number one, which is transportation collaboratively, so that we have come up with that solution. So we are now encouraging you as council members to please consider our next, helping us meet the goal of accomplishing priority number two, affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this resolution? Please approach the podium now. This is a public hearing. This is the last call to speak on this resolution.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Howard?
What this is going to boil down to is if City Council is willing to step up to the plate and commit to funding the construction portion. If City Council is willing to commit to that, then this is the next priority to be addressed and that is something staff would recommend, as long as City Council is willing to commit to funding the construction portion. Because the project has changed from last year. Last year we were gonna do one unit, maybe two, but possibly one. This is a much better proposal because what this does is we go out, use CDBG funds to bid out and hire an architect and to do four units all at once. And that's for economies of scale. You mobilize once and you do all four units at once. I think the numbers that are in front of you on what potentially it might cost, I think that's fairly high. Of course, we don't know till we bid it out, but it's not, it's highly unlikely it's gonna come back with that number of what's attached. And even the architectural services, we think that number might be high, but we would bid that out per CDBG rules and we would do it immediately because we have to get these monies spent within a timely manner and show HUD that we're moving forward with the architectural phase and that City Council has committed to the construction phase. If you are committed to that, then this certainly is more critical than sidewalks.
I guess in, I see the merits of the project. Affordable housing is definitely, you know, up there on the priority list. We've heard this for the last two years. I mean, it's nothing, there's no new information here. It is needed and this is a great spot. This is a great location for that. And it would also, you know, they've tried to use it as incubator space and small business space and that never really took off, probably, you know, the economic times and all of that together. It just didn't work the way they saw it. We've all been in those shoes. My only, my only thought here is that this is not budgeted. The construction funds are not budgeted, so in my mind, I think I would rather look at this during the budget process. If we do use these CDBG funds, I think they would be well-spent, but now we're taking on an unknown number into the future, into our budget. If we're okay with that, then we should go ahead and change the priorities. If we're not okay with that, then I would definitely slot this into the next budget conversation and look at it that way. So I don't know where you all are leaning, Kim?
I would like to do it now. This is really a big need and we've talked about it since I've been on council for one way or another and we do have some funds available from the BP and, you know, other stuff coming in. And I really think it's important, the housing that's being built on Airport Road, even after it's full, there's still a waiting list of 500 people for that. I mean, it's really a big need for us. I think it's a great use for our funds and I would just like to see it get going now. I mean, there are people living outside.
I guess if we do spend the CDBG funds now for the architectural study, at least we'll have the number. We will have the number going forward for the budget and it'll be there and we'll have to find a way to pay for it. Tom, and then I'll come around.
If it's a choice of building a sidewalk or putting a roof over somebody's head, I'm inclined to support putting a roof over somebody's head. So I think it's a good project. I'm wondering, I think that the price, the estimate that we have for the architectural work is extremely high. I think that we can, that something can be done with that. And I'm also wondering if there's any way that, should we decide to use funds from BP or whatever source, if there's any chance that they might be reimbursed from CDBG at a later date?
No.
No, okay.
I have a couple of questions before I make a comment. Approximately how many square feet of living space are we talking about in these four units? Roughly?
Isn't each unit about a little over a thousand square feet?
That's right. Each unit is about a thousand square feet.
Okay, so that's, that's my point. With the high numbers that we've got, building 4,000 square feet of living space from a commercial standpoint and a, if you were to build it as a builder with a 5% construction loan, you're gonna turn a, at normal rents, you're gonna turn, this is a deal, even at the high number. And if we can do it for considerably less, which we expect we will be able to, this is a very efficient investment in affordable living space.
Well, we have to, excuse me, we have to keep in mind the shell is already constructed. We're talking about, only about interior construction.
That's exactly my point. We're talking about putting $4,000 of living space in something significantly less than $90 a square foot. This is, even at the high numbers, I'm saying, in the worst-case scenario, it's still a good deal. And obviously, we're going to work towards getting the best deal we can.
And Nancy. The other consideration too, in moving into the architectural services, that it's already been mentioned, that this is ADA and special, some of this could be special needs housing too. So it's not just putting in a normal apartment that, you know, a vanilla thing. It might have to have some specialty construction elements to it. So Nancy?
I don't disagree that there's a need and it's, nothing that we can do will satisfy the complete need. So it's, it's a noble project. I'm disappointed that there hasn't been more of a community support behind this and to try to make a project out of this as a community as opposed to just asking us to do this. It's a remodel. And in our community, we've had so many organizations take on projects like this, or big projects, and get things done. So I question at this point in time, when we have so many different needs, we haven't had an opportunity to really put together all of what is, what are we looking at, I think from a budget standpoint, or what all kinds of things are we looking to spend our money on and we're just going to prioritize one thing and all of a sudden it's committed. So it's a concern I have from a financial standpoint.
Tom, then Howard?
Where is, anybody know where Habitat for Humanity is on this? I think there's been some conversation with Habitat about this project.
They don't do rental.
They don't?
Correct. That's exactly, they did have the conversations, however Habitat doesn't argue rental.
Because I would agree with Nancy that maybe that's an opportunity for them that they could have stepped up to the plate.
There's Habitat. I mean, I know I put the organization in contact with the Charlotte, sort of Building Industry Association as an organization, there wasn't interest. But, you know, it's, when we took on the Artisans Atelier in Herald Court Center, the structure was there, but we did a lot of work. We got the architecture services donated, the engineering services were donated, the construction was donated, and we got a grant from the Charlotte Community Foundation. We had, we did come to the CRA and ask the CRA for $15,000 to help us pay for the interior, I don't wanna call them, the partitions between the artists' spaces and for signage. And the CRA did contribute $15,000. But in total, there was over $30,000 worth of construction. There was 10,000 in engineering, 10,000 in architecture, and a $7,500 grant. So there was a lot of money.
Well, I think moving forward, if we do move forward with the architectural design and that's, that's, you know, put into place, then the community could go out, we can look for other grants, we can look for any other money sources, and then we can engage the Builders Association and say, okay, drywall guy, this guy, that guy. I mean, that's still a possibility. I don't think they're there yet, you know, because really, they need to get this going before they can really do the outreach that you're talking about. And I think that would really help them to have those plans in place.
Yeah, I would like to see us commit to this. This is a project that's been talked about for a couple of years and really, even our CRA funds, I mean, it's really, you know, supposed to be used for that type of thing. And, you know, we've, you know, now it's closed, there's no more CRA funds. That would have been a perfect project for that. And we built a parking garage. And, you know, not that it's not a wonderful thing for downtown, but I think it's just time that we do something, you know, not that we don't do anything, but I just think this is a good project and I just think it needs to be done.
We need some kind of motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve paying for the architectural drawings for the renovation of the Andrews Building.
Okay, so we have a motion of second to use the BRDC architectural, the funding for the architectural services for the units as our priority for the CDBG funding. Question?
Discussion item.
Sure.
Can we then make a request that as we are committing to do this, that there's a commitment to make this a joint effort so that it becomes, to try to make a community project out of this?
Sure.
As opposed to just a...
With the understanding that if we're still gonna be involved, we're still here to see if it's successfully concluded at the end of the day.
Absolutely.
Yes, we are committing to that right now if this passes. Okay, so we have a motion of second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Okay, so we will immediately prepare bid specs to go out for architectural services.
We will.
Yeah, just remember, the city is gonna be handling all of these processes. We're not handing it over to anybody. We are keeping this all in-house, including the construction and things of that nature, correct?
That's correct.
We're bidding it out.
For long term.
Yes.
We're bidding this out.
Okay, thank you. And now we have our second public hearing, GA-02-16.
Yes, Mayor, before I get into this, I would like to just make a, clarify a statement that I made during the discussion regarding the Caldwell Banker lease.
Okay.
I did not mean to suggest that the hard-working local real estate agents or the local office have been delaying the progress of that lease. They are as anxious as we are to get it moving forward and it may very well be the attorneys in New Jersey that are slowing things down. Okay, next is GA-02-16. This is the first reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. Ignorance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida amending the Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 23, Traffic, Article 2, Parking Areas, Sections 23-17E and F, limiting on-street parking around the historic county courthouse to two hours, providing for exceptions, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Mikel Finkel, paralegal for the record. Give me just a second. Okay. This ordinance came about, staff was contacted by the Supervisor of Elections Office with concerns about long-term parking in the spaces around the historic courthouse. It was alleged that it was downtown business employees parking there all day long. So staff put together this ordinance, limiting the parking to two hours, and that's only during business hours, Monday through Friday, I think eight to five or eight to 4:30. At the request of Charlotte County Facilities, there are two handicap parking or disabled persons parking spaces, county facilities maintenance and combat veterans, wounded veterans parking space. They asked that those be left with no time limit and staff agreed.
My only hesitation was I've also heard complaints that this same thing happens in the Hector House Plaza parking lot, so I don't know if there's any consideration for that right behind there too, next to the Witschke Building. There are people that park there all day long. And if they are downtown working, they're supposed to be parking in the parking garage. So if we're considering this, I would like to talk about the Hector House Plaza as well because I see it as the same type of situation. Nancy?
I don't disagree with you at the Hector House, that is a concern. I know that the Charlotte Community Foundation would like to have more parking and if they're having meetings there and the meeting is an all-afternoon meeting, the Hector House Plaza, a parking area, is really the only option that they have unless people go to the parking garage. So I don't know how we would address with businesses. I just think it might be a little unfriendly to the Charlotte Community Foundation. I do have one other comment though, and that is that I know that the first parking space, you can't see it on here, but the first parking space along Olympia, right at the corner of Taylor and Olympia on the north side, that's all two-hour parking. But the first space, right next to Taylor, is in front of where the two-hour parking sign is and the Supervisor of Elections often uses that parking space for his vehicle, personal vehicle. And so it would be, I think, good for us to comment to the Supervisor of Elections that he shouldn't be using that or move the sign. Move the sign so that it's up in front of that space because I've had people comment.
She was the one who came with the request.
I hear ya. I'm just, just saying. So if we could, you know...
Yeah, we can, we can deal with the sign.
Okay.
Any other comments before we open the public hearing?
How would we enforce it?
The police will. I mean, they have, when the patrols are doing their zones, they'll go by and if they see a car there after three or four hours, they'll figure it out.
Any other comments or questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA-02-16, please come to the podium, state your name and address and you will be given three minutes. Anybody wanna speak on GA-02-16? Make your way over there. Last call.
Move to close public hearing.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Howard?
This is one of those instances where we tried to use the nice approach first and that is, a couple of years ago, put the word out to the downtown merchants in the chamber to get to the business owners in the downtown, park in the parking garage, don't use up customer spaces, and using the nice approach has not worked.
So how about if this passes, telling the Supervisor of Elections, all employees of his building should be parking in the parking garage? How about that? We send a message?
Nice approach.
A nice approach. All employees, top to bottom.
We'll use the nice approach.
Okay. All right, so we need some kind of motion.
I'll move approval of GA-02-16.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve GA-02-16, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Are you gonna, you go to downtown merchants? Do you wanna reiterate?
Yeah, every month I go.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll reiterate.
Okay, now we're moving on to GA-03-16.
Yeah, and I presume that the discussion regarding Hector House, that would, that would trigger another ordinance if you wanted to go that route. The next is GA-03-16, which is the first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida amending the Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 23, Traffic, Article 2, Parking Areas, Section 23-13, Parking in Lashley Park and Ponce de León Park, to regulate parking in the municipally-owned parking lots serving Lashley Park and the municipal Marina, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Are you the parking guru now?
Mikel Finkel, paralegal. Okay, this ordinance came about for several reasons. Staff is continually... Staff is continually receiving complaints about just the lack of parking in, for the whole area. They come from park users, from the businesses in Lashley Crab House Center, from our marina staff. So I worked with the police department and other staff in zoning, and we put together a proposal to, to limit some of the parking in the area. So just to touch on them, the three internal circles, they're, they're not technically roundabouts, but the round areas. Stat, I believe council talked about this before, what we will paint those or do something for no parking, so that fire apparatus can maneuver the area. The spaces along the interactive fountain, it's hard to see, in orange at the top left, we are proposing those be limited to four hours. That would allow folks using the interactive fountain, the pathway, persons fishing there, a parking turnover, that would allow more people to use those, and would eliminate the marina tenant long-term parking in those spaces. The main lot, which is the big lot, 24-hour parking, except, okay, let me go, 24-hour parking, that allows people who are enjoying drinks at the crab house, if someone needs to leave a car overnight for, you know, safety purposes, they can do that. That lot would also be used now for marina tenant long-term parking. The dock master would issue a permit to the liveaboards and other folks for the time period they need. The idea, though, is not to have someone have their car sit there for 30, 60 days while they're out on the boat. Oh, there's reserved parking spaces, were put in, in front of the crab house building. They were never, the, the proprietors just of the building painted it there, it was never approved or anything. We're proposing that that be removed, and those just be regular parking spaces. The marina tenant and marina temporary parking by the dumpster will remain as is. Folks can park there, except for certain hours in the morning when the dumpster is emptied. And then currently, the Downtown Bait and Tackle Shop has a utility trailer that's left in the parking lot, which stores their kayaks, paddleboards that they use on a daily basis. When staff first put this together, we offered, or it was our suggestion to have the storage of, of not only that trailer, but we believed that smugglers had their catering trailer that was kept there, to put them over in the boat trailer parking lot, which is a more suitable, longer space for those type of items. So let me get into recommendations. We did, that was staff's recommendation, and that's what's written in the ordinance. We discussed this with both the property manager, who does marina management, and for the Lashley Crab House Center. They were okay with all the changes, except for the, removing the reserved parking spaces. They requested that those be changed to like five-minute for business owners if they need to run in and out of the building. And then they informed us that their catering trailer is stored off-site and not at the facility, and it would be their recommendation to have no utility storage trailers on any of the lots. And then in your packets, again, the Downtown Bait and Tackle folks, they were okay with all the changes, except for where we suggested to, to place the utility trailer. I can't show it because the screen's down, but in your packets is her letter and a picture of how they wanted to, they would like to move it close to the marina ramp as possible.
Questions before we open the public hearing? Mikel, are we issuing marina tenant parking permits now? Do we do any of that?
Um, I'd ask question. No.
No. So that would be a whole new thing that we would institute? Okay.
And it would be a, you know, no charge or anything, just something they could stick in their window?
That would correspond to the dates that they're there?
Yeah. Could know while they're there.
This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA-03-16, please come to the podium, state your name and address. You will have three minutes.
My name is Lois Bach. My address is 120 Lashley Court, Lashley Marina. As a resident of Lashley Marina, the picture you're looking at is a dated picture. It no longer looks like that. The sidewalk, as you know, is torn up, and there's a lot more boats in there. I've been winters at the marina for four years. I've lived aboard a boat for 20 years. I've lived on the entire east coast of Florida. I've lived in Europe. And I can tell you that marinas provide parking for their people, and it is a real problem. And when you remove and turn the parking into four-hour parking, those people will be moving over to the other parking lot. And we have a real critical situation at the marina that makes living there feeling like Manhattan. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Barris. I live on the E-Doc at Lashley Marina. I just have a few concerns I'd like to present to you. I understand the parking with the roundabouts, it's wonderful. My question is last, well, I guess I can't, I just, a comment. They were all full last night. Now, in all those, when they have, we have to move those cars to find other parking. Lashley Park was totally full last night. I came home from work about six. I had to park in that bank in the very far corner. I didn't know if I could leave it there overnight. I was tired, I went home at six, wanted to just relax, get ready for bed. So I went back out about eight and tried to find a spot in Lashley. I found one, fortunately. I don't have a problem walking. My concern is it's full, especially this time of year. Everywhere, the grass. Awesome when there's festivals. Excuse me. It would be appreciated if they would tell us ahead of time that we cannot get in there that day. They threaten us to tow our cars. You know, I thought this was supposed to be very, what's the word in your rules? You know, respect each other. And we try to do that. I asked if I could just run in there for 20 minutes, walk my dogs. They're like, no, 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 go. And there's nowhere to go. These are just concerns I just want to present, I'm not, so, just for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's James Karts. I've lived on E-Doc at Lashley Marina for two and a half years. Most afternoons, I sit down on the back deck of my boat, and I noticed that the days that the parking lot is jammed full, people pull in and they go to the restaurant. It's not, you know, residents, it's the general public that are doing this. The city moved the parking bench, the sitting benches that block off the pavilions for the inspection of the police equipment, and they weren't very timely in putting them back. And people were parking under the, under the pavilions on the concrete, and they all went to the restaurant. Having to park out in the larger parking lot, if you go to the laundromat and you come back with two bundles of clothes, that's a hardship to carry that, that distance. And, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on GA-03-16? Please start making your way to the podium. There's anybody else, please come over.
Good morning. My name's Bobby Leahy. I'm actually the owner of Downtown Bait and Tackle. I do agree with the tenants of the marina, there needs to be parking for them, because it's very hard and difficult. They part, some of the people park on where we do our 30-minute parking right by our building, and we understand that it's, you know, it's closer for them to get to the boat docks, and especially with all the construction going on right now. There needs to be placement for them. As far as for my business, where you have my trailer parking, it's very far away from the boat ramp. I have to actually take out kayaks, which, like, in my proposal, you know, they're 40, 50 pounds. I've had multiple issues in my stomach to where I'm unable to do it. And I need it as close as possible, because when I'm there by myself, I'm going to need to be able to get the things for the customers that come in. So I'm just asking for, I have to have a trailer. I know smugglers or whatever, so they didn't want any trailers or the parking, but we have to. We have it in our lease. We keep our kayaks in there, we keep things that we need for our company. So we do need it there, and we need it as close as possible. The one that I suggested is the one right here, which is the closest one to the boat ramp. So hopefully, you guys allow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on GA-03-16?